All right, it is 6:30. We will go ahead and get started. Start to with a call to order and reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we're gonna start with roll call. We have everybody here, including our two new student representatives, who will get to introduce themselves in a moment. Could I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. And we are up to communications. So first one is open period for patron comments relating to board agenda items. The ones that we currently have are not actually board agenda items, so all of those will be at the end to let everybody know, but this should be a quick meeting, so shouldn't be too long. So we move to the next one, which is standing committee reports. And on this one, I'd like to start by introducing our student reps from our high schools. Start off with Oakville, Nemanja, also known as Nano, Medan, who was over here.
Welcome.
And over here from Melville High School is Emily Worthmore. So thank you both of you for signing up and being selected for this. We kinda talked a little bit before this that we really enjoy having student reps on this. We need to get you microphones because we want to hear from you during these meetings and know what you're thinking and allow you to ask questions, so we'll figure that out before the next meeting. So thank you. And then anyone else had a meeting since the last, since our last meeting?
We had a communications committee meeting. And the big point was that there were targets that we were targeting for social media, and they were estimated out towards 21 for targets that we already hit. And it shows that we're doing a good job in reaching the public through Facebook, through Instagram, and through Twitter. That's it.
Great. Yeah, our communications department's been doing a great job.
Plus, we also had some new members come on the committee as well.
Great. Tori, did you have any? Peggy?
Nothing.
Jean? No. Larry? I had the communications one, so I will not repeat what you just said. So, great. Thank you. All right, the next item up is action items by consent. If nobody would want to pull something, can we get?
I do.
You do? Okay. Which one?
Under, uh, hold on. The policy changes?
That's under seven.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We've got the minutes, financials, warrants, and HR, or hiring, and such.
I'm good, sorry.
Okay. Anyone else? If there's none, could I get a motion to approve action items by consent?
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. All right. Next one is the ELL data report, which I actually know I've been looking forward to, but since it says data...
There's some data with it being pandemic, but good evening. Thanks for having me, and I appreciate the opportunity to get to share with you some information about our EL learners and our EL staff. So this slide just shows kinda historically our numbers for teachers and teachers assistants, our EL coach, and also students receiving services and students that are in monitoring statuses. And one thing I just wanted to point out, that in the spring of 2017, Missouri developed universal entrance and exit criteria to align with ESSA. And as a result of that, Missouri's exit criteria went to 4.7. Before that, our district's exit criteria for a student to go to the MY1 status was a 5.0. And so the state going to the universal 4.7 resulted in that year of a huge increase in the students that exited in the 18, 19 to 346 kids in MY1 and MY2. And that's just kinda continually progressed. So that's kind of a little bit of how some of those things changed as a result of ESSA. The other thing is, over the last couple years, the district's experiencing an increase in students who have limited or informal interruptions in their education, as well as students that are having six years or less time in the country. So this next slide shows how many newcomers we have, which means they've been in the country 36 months or less, so that's the number of students we have right now in our district. And this also with our learning plans and options for students this year due to the pandemic. This is the number of students and the percentages kind of with the EL population who's in Melville at home in elementary, middle, and high school. The next two slides show just enrollments on different demographics that we have. One thing, it's been a pretty significant increase from last year is our students in transition, and that's pretty aligned with the district overall. Since August, we have hit an increase of 85 students that have been eligible to become a student in transition, K through 12 in the district. So that number has definitely increased, which is aligned, like I said, with our trend right now in the district. For our entrance and exit, or sorry, our exit data, this just shows how many students transitioned because they earned that 4.7 on the access test, or they exited with a portfolio as we headed into this year and all the way back to 2013 and 14. And you can see our numbers of enrollment has just increased over time. We're pretty steady the last two years, but we definitely have had an increase since 2013 and 14. The next slide, the next two slides show our students that earned SEAL of Bili literacy. This is new as of last year. We actually got awarded the ability to be able to award kids this honor in December of 2019 after we submitted an application to DESI. And so these students earned the SEAL. So we had 11 students at Melville High School and Oakville High School that earned the SEAL. And then we had four students that ended up earning the distinguished seal of biliteracy. Now, the difference between the two is to earn the SEAL, the criteria is students are showing a high level of achievement in English and an intermediate level of proficiency in a second language. Now, to earn the distinguished seal of biliteracy, students are showing an advanced level of proficiency in at least two languages. So for students to go through this process, they can be a junior or senior at the high schools, and they have to go through an application process. In that application process, they had to meet some requirements in English. So they have to either have EOC requirement, or English ACT, or the access score if they're an EL student. Also, they had to have proficiency in a language other than English, or as you can see, for some of our students, languages other than English. And those are taken through the Apple Test that we do through our foreign language department. And then another criteria that they have to meet is a social-cultural competency. So some students may have done a presentation. Some students may have attended events or other sort of experiences that they had to report out on. So many of our students, we had to go to outside agencies to get the work that they presented in their heritage language assessed with a rubric to see if they were proficient in the language, since we did not have anyone in the district that spoke like Vietnamese or Russian. So we used other people in our community to help support showing that the kids had proficiency. So really proud of this group of children this year. Really glad the district is able to honor students that are multilingual. And so it's kind of a cool piece that we have now for our district. The next part is a small snippet of our distance learning survey. So in the spring, we did not do this student social-emotional learning survey through Panorama just because we'd been out of school for a good chunk of the spring. So they put together a distance learning survey for us. And so this particular slide is for students in the grades three through five, mainly hit on daily habits. Like a question example is how much time do you spend learning or completing your schoolwork? Another question may have been, how much time of your day do you spend on your smartphone, tablet, or computer that maybe isn't related to school? So all of the responses and the percentages at the top are based on the positive responses that students make. So if they make a response that they're kinda on the fence, or if it's a response that is not, you know, positive as far as they're doing well, or it's all the time, or some of the time, on the Likert scale, it only presents the positive responses, the way the survey works. So you can see that our EL kids on this particular part in three through five were kinda in line with where their regular, you know, their English-speaking peers are. If you look at the next slide, it's about social supports. And so I just kinda pulled up, when I click on the graph, the difference shows that, you know, our EL students, as well as our students who are non-EL, exactly are in the exact same percentage on that. There's no difference between their responses. And some of the social support questions were around, do you have an adult or teacher at school that you can count on no matter what? When your friend is sad, how do you know and how can you help them? And then also, do you feel that you're bullied by other students at school? So each one of these, to get the percentage, probably has five or six questions that students answer. Sixth through 12th grade also did that survey. Questions are, the topics are the same, the questions are a little bit more advanced for the older students in the secondary. And so you can see in this one, our EL students actually had a higher score in areas like well-being and areas that students were assessed in. And that's where some of the green pluses are showing up. Also, an example on the well-being and positive feelings. So our EL students responded 72% were in favorable responses versus all respondents on that particular piece of the survey were 64%. So this is a baseline for our district. We actually, next week, are gonna deploy the Fall 2020 SEL survey as well as a distance learning survey, since students have either been connected or possibly blended with still some virtual opportunities up until the recent time, until we start bringing K through A back. So we're gonna get a second data point probably in about four weeks after students get a chance to take the second data point on our distance learning survey for the district. So our EL professional development has changed a little bit. Just like everything else, everything's had to be tweaked a little bit. So this year, we are doing a virtual mini-conference through Elevate, which is supported through Ed+. And Jamie Williams, who's our EL coach coordinator who's here tonight, she takes a pretty active role and has done a lot of planning and making that happen with our region. And she's part of their executive board of developing this particular conference. We also spend a lot of time on the reclassification process to see which students need to go from RCV to an MY1 or 2, or to the AY3 or 4 status and have that updated so it's correct in core data. And then teachers give the access test. So all of our EL teachers have to go through probably about 20 hours of independent and kinda directed with Jamie and Andrew Coonert training on how to correctly give the access test. Then student portfolios and rubrics, since that's an exit strategy now that teachers can utilize if a student maybe isn't earning exactly that 4.7. There's other routes that students can exit and still be supported, that the state is allowing now. And then also, all of our teachers had to do the screener training. So all of them are certified and able to give the screener when new ELs come to the district. And through the enrollment process are identified as a potential EL and have to have the screening process to see if they receive services or not. So this team is really awesome. They are managing, I think, pretty resiliently through working with students, depending on what range they're teaching at right now. They could have kids that potentially could be at Melville at home, connected, and blended. So they're really doing a great job. I can't commend them enough of the work that they do on getting all of this together to support kids, making sure that we have all of our compliance pieces in place so that we're doing what we need to do to stay in good shape with DESI, and then just taking care of all the EL needs and the family communication needs with our families of our immigrant and our EL learners. So I'm really proud of the work that they do. They are a great team. And through the pandemic and all the changes that we've had to make on the fly, they've done an amazing job. So all the credit goes to them. But they, I think we're in a, you know, we're getting into a really good place right now, and I appreciate all the work that they do. So I know that we've talked long enough, so what questions do you guys have for me tonight?
I have a couple questions.
Go ahead.
Can you help, can you explain the access test? How does the teacher determine whether they're going to have a student take that?
So if a student is classified as an EL student?
Yeah.
They have to take the access test?
Everybody does. Okay. And they do it yearly until, or they do it yearly until they reach that 4.7 or higher?
Yes.
Okay.
Or they exit with a portfolio.
Right.
Yes.
So how is that going with being able to keep up with that since March? And ongoing with the way school has been? What's the status?
So we were lucky. Last year, we start our access testing right when kids come back in January, because the window opens January 1st and usually goes to the 1st of March. We always do our access testing right when we get back from winter break.
Okay.
And it takes about a month with the way that we've done it in the past.
Yeah.
So we were able to get all of our testing completed. Not other, not all districts were able to do that before they went to closure. So the state has given a little bit of, I won't say an exemption, but they've extended the window. So this year, access window is from the 1st of January through, I believe it's right at the end of, 1st of May this year? Oh, April 4th, okay. So they've extended it a month. So they're giving districts an extra month to get the access completed for the spring.
Okay.
So we still have to do it. It still has to be in person. So Jamie and Andrew Coonert and I have been meeting and have another meeting scheduled for next week about how we're gonna, you know, what's our logistics, how we're gonna do this, how we're gonna get kids transported, all of those pieces. Because there is no online option. It has to be face-to-face.
Okay.
Some of them have to be small groups, because some of them are speaking and listening sessions, and they cannot be over groups of five with a teacher. So we're actually working on the logistics of that right now, but that's a really good question. We lucked out last year because we were finished before closure started.
That's good.
But this year, we're just gonna have to kinda see what it's gonna look like with what the future is gonna hold for being in session and being blended.
Okay.
So is all of this, sorry if I could tie into that. Is all of this then from the first quarter of 2020?
Yes.
Is even though, is this the first year when they changed to 4.7?
No, it was two, three years ago is when the 4.7 hit.
Okay.
Going into the 18 year.
How do we do comparison-wise to the prior year as far as just average score?
From the?
From 2019 to 2020, how did that access test, as far as students taking it, look? In other words, did the scores go up? Did they go down? Did they hold steady?
Jamie? We haven't really, we just got our scores back.
Okay, so slightly down? So pretty flat. Okay, that's fair.
So as a general rule, this is the case for all ELs is that you're continuously exiting the highest scores.
Right.
It tends to say exactly that. As a general...
Sure, unless we would do something that would really push a bunch of kids one year, we might see a spike, but that makes sense. I get it. Sorry, thank you for letting me jump in.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, have you had any feedback from the EL teachers in regards to how it's been working with virtual school and also the at-home environment? And how they feel about what they've been able to accomplish pushing in? And maybe the number of, have there been a decent number of intervention, like, you know, meetings set up and things like that? Do you have any feedback on that?
Sure. I mean, I think it's been a challenge, like it probably has been for everyone. And they've had to shift some of the instructional styles that we've used in the past, like when we were really focusing on co-teaching. Sometimes that didn't know, you know, that obviously didn't always work when we were all virtual to be able to co-teach like we would effectively when we were face-to-face. I will say that our EL teachers, probably when we opened up, that teachers could bring in students in groups of three or less. Our EL teachers jumped on that very quickly.
Okay.
And our EL families were one of the first to start doing interventions when we could do that in the connected model.
Okay.
So yeah, I mean, I think they've been doing the best they can under the circumstances that we're working through.
Right, right, under the circumstances. I have one more question. We were talking about, like, caseloads with the EL teacher at a school. And can you help me wrap my head around how that looks for a teacher tying in with so many? Because I'm just thinking, if they're, I mean, I don't know what it's like, but if there's one EL teacher at a school like a beer bomb or something, they might have more than one. But there's a lot, that's a lot of teachers they'll be tying in with, right? So how do they accomplish that? Because that seems overwhelming to me.
No, it's a really good question. So I think it, you know, it depends on the site, and you're right, some sites have multiple teachers.
Yeah.
Depending on the numbers of students. But, you know, teachers have multiple things they do. So if the EL teacher's co-teaching with the grade-level teacher?
Okay.
Or a content teacher, we really try to work to where they can have some time where they actually plan, you know, assess together, be able to do all of that work together. Doesn't work perfectly for every teacher. Sometimes, I'll be honest, they probably do a lot of before and after-school coordination with people. They do offer those TDS that they do, whether, you know, it would be for just all the teachers on just strategies that are good for ELs, or really strategies good for all kids. So a lot of times, whether it's looking at ways of shrinking the text or giving, you know, text responses, they work with that. And they do that through sometimes just training they do with all staff in the buildings, just to help support.
That was another question I was gonna have. Okay.
So they do a lot of that underlying things as well to support just teachers that may not have them, you know, side-by-side with them in a classroom, but be able to support the ELs that are in the classroom if that EL teacher doesn't always have direct contact with that teacher.
Got it.
So they kinda spread those strategies out that are best practices so that everyone can use them.
Okay, okay.
It's not perfect, but I mean, they do a really good job.
Right. Yeah, it sounds so overwhelming. It sounds so overwhelming to me. Just a lot of people to connect with. So I'm sure that's like a, yeah, very crazy schedule. Okay.
Good. Jean, do you have one?
Oh, I don't know. I just, it's a little convoluted, you know, trying to figure out how I wanna phrase it. But, I mean, these surveys, or whatever you wanna call them, are given without any anonymity. They're just under their own name. I mean, you know, they, they, when they answer these questions, you know who's answering the question, right?
Yeah, so like when a student logs in, so there's just a general link. What identifies is a student puts in their PIN number, for the launch PIN number. So that ties the data back to the school, ties the data back to the individual student. Yes.
So is there any concerns about, I don't wanna say honesty, but, you know, being completely forthright on all these answers about their positive well-being and everything like that? I mean, is there any follow-up, or is there anything that we do after that, you know, to? It's like, okay, so this person got a perfect score on their ACT, you know. Are we gonna check that they didn't cheat, or, you know what I'm saying?
So I do. And I mean, I'll be honest, I mean, I'm sure there's some times students probably don't take it very seriously and maybe click random things. But the one thing is that the counselors, the principals, teachers have access to that data. So part of what we're starting to use Panorama for is to intervene and to support students.
Well, and of course, that's the important part.
Yes.
Which is why I was driving at that, you know.
Right.
That we do know who they are, and, you know, if the questions are, seems, or the answers seem skewed in some way.
Definitely.
That we could follow up on.
Right. And like for this, the example, the couple slides that I included for some of the data from the distance learning, that's one, that's one data point. So as we get another data point this fall, in the next couple weeks, teachers can kinda start, and principals can start comparing that, because, you know, if you have two points where a student's kind of in a situation, that may be a different conversation than if you see growth over time.
That will certainly help clarify things, too. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I've got a couple. So EL is something, I know for all of us, it's very near and dear to our hearts because we all understand that, you know, if kids can't read, then the whole thing about learning later on is just gone. You have to learn how to read in order to learn how to learn. So I know this is something that all of us take real seriously, and I'm gonna go back to the data side of it. For the last four years, we've been doing really well as we got more EL support, more teachers in the classroom, interventionists. And we saw, you know, a slight move at first, but then it really picked up, especially last year. There were some really good gains. And I'll admit it, I was looking forward to MAP scores, like getting those about now, right? And seeing continued gains, hopefully. And really trying to narrow in on where are the final things that we need to do to get to where we wanna be, but we don't have those data points. So my question really comes down to, we added people at first, and now I know in the last year especially, a little over a year, you guys have really focused on efficiency. So really utilizing the time for our EL teachers productively and to the maximum effect and all of that. We also know EL needs are improving, from what you have told us. So my question comes down to, what are the last areas that we need to get on top of? And is that people, or is that processes, or a combination of both? And how do we make sure that we don't let the needs get away from us? That we're moving faster to improve this than the needs are moving?
Wow, that's a good question.
Thank you.
A lot of questions. So I mean, I think it's probably always a combination. I will say that one thing that we are talking a lot about, and I think is continuing to maybe elevate to a level of need is working on what a newcomer-type program would look like in our district. And it's kind of a moving target, because sometimes we have newcomers in elementary, sometimes we have more newcomers. at elementary, sometimes we have more newcomers at middle and high school. And, you know, it's one of those things, it's not just, kids aren't coming in at just one level. So, trying to figure out, based on some of the, you know, some of the new pieces of data where we have kids that are in the country less than six years, we have kids that have, you know, interrupted or interrupted informal-formal education issues and gaps, trying to figure out what a newcomer program would look like, how we would support it at the district level, and is it a certain grade range or is it something that we have to kinda be fluid with depending on the needs of students that are enrolling in the district at any given time. So, it is a moving target, but I think that's one thing that we're wanting to focus on a little bit more because really all we're doing, all that we're able to provide right now is we're doing a lot of scaffolding and general ed support. So the newcomer program would probably be a little bit more, a little bit more directed for a shorter period of time to get a student where they were able to access a little bit more quickly and not with all the general ed support. So that's something that we're definitely wanting to look at.
I think I can say that's a good answer. Because if I'm not mistaken, I think you've given us the data before that when we have kids from kindergarten on, we tend to do very well with them. But as we get new kids who come in without, where we haven't had them from the beginning, they tend to struggle more. So you're essentially saying you're gonna start focusing now on those kids that come in in the middle to try and make sure that we're able to bring them up.
Definitely.
That's good. Thank you.
Welcome.
Can I make another comment and maybe just like point to the attention of the board? Just for thoughts and, you know, Adam, like chime in. In some of our pre-meeting questions, you gave us some data, someone gave us some data in regards to the number, the ratio student to EL student. And just looking at that, I see that we're not, we're kind of in the middle of the pack when it comes to ratio similar to others, a little bit higher than others, a little bit lower than a couple. But we are, our enrollment is huge compared to any other district. I mean, 1624, and the closest one to that is 866 in Francis Powell. Others are sprinkled, besides Hazelwood, others are just sprinkled. And so it just makes me wonder if it's really realistic to compare that ratio at all when we have such a large amount of students in our district who are EL students. And are we just doing everything we can to make sure we're servicing their needs because there's such a large population? I mean, that's really significant, right?
Yeah, I expected more would be, I expected we'd see more that would be more similar to us when I asked that question about the ratios.
Mm-hmm.
It's, yeah. What do you think, Adam?
I mean, I would say outside of Saintless Public in our region, we do have the largest Yale population. And, and over time, a lot of students and families who become more stable, they tend to move towards South County after, you know, they're able to get a little bit more transitional and afford a home and such, or another, another move for their family. A lot of times, our Saintless Public School kids come to South County. So, I mean, and their system's completely different. I mean, they're a lot larger and they have a lot, they have a lot of immigrant students and a lot of EL students. But they're really our only, I guess, sort of comparison in the area because other, you know, even Hazelwood Parkway, they're in the 600s for their numbers of total YLs.
Yeah.
Or 16.
If you look at that sort of different way of concentration, you are the highest concentration.
Yeah.
If you look at the Bayless numbers, you see that's probably the second highest concentration because that, those are the two communities that really work together.
My understanding is that part of the reason people move into our district is because we've actually been recognized, maybe not on an official level, but on an unofficial level by people that we tend to do very well in this area. Now, it's unofficial that I've heard that, but that's something that I have heard, that people tend to want to move here, especially some of our immigrant families that fall into this because of that. So, in a way, it seems like we've built a bit of a specialty in our district as far as being able to do this fairly well, even though we wanna keep improving it and making it better. So, there's probably a bit there that's reinforcing as people move here because we're actually good at this.
Yeah.
And I guess this becomes a problem of our own success, so we need to keep the staff accommodating to the numbers that keep coming into our district because we're doing a good job of it. So I think we need to keep tracking the numbers coming in and make sure the staffing numbers are falling behind at least in some measure.
Yeah. If we're to look at it like a business, these are our customers. And we have to be responsive to the needs of our customers. That's...
Yeah, and I, I mean, I guess I agree with, you know, what everyone is saying. I guess I'm just trying to identify that since we just have such a high concentration of those students, we want to excel. I mean, of course, we wanna excel at every single program that we have. But continuously looking at ways that we can be more effective, more efficient, add, you know, additional support as needed, et cetera, so that we are doing good service and justice to the program and to the students and what we want for them and what they deserve. I just think it needs to be something that really stays highlighted for us as a board and as a district.
Yeah, I agree. Anything else?
No.
Anyone else? Thank you for being a good sport, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, yeah.
Thanks for your continued support of the program and the team, and have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I've lost my agenda here. Okay, so next up is considering policy revisions. Was anyone going to talk about these or is it...
I think I'd like to start out. Going over on GCD and GDC and BBFA, they definitely need some conversation.
Okay. Do you want to start or...
Give me one second. But yes, basically, the revisions that were done on BBFA, GDC, and GCD were clarification of some of the policies for board members with immediate relatives in the district. And as I've read them over, there's, it seems to be a discrepancy, at least as I'm interpreting them, that if you're an existing employee, being, having an immediate member become a board member, immediate relative become a board member is not an issue, but it has a, discrepancy comes in with new hires. So, if we're allowing existing employees to have immediate member, immediate relatives be board members, why would we have the policy where we're not allowing new hires to be under the same criteria, either with allowing it or not allowing it? But I think it would be best to have it be a policy where if you're an immediate relative to an employee, you should not be a board member or the reverse. But just, there seems to be that dichotomy between the two stances where it's just a matter of timing more than anything else.
Yeah, you're not wrong. So this is something that actually we discussed a lot before you had gotten onto the board and actually got MSBA Legal involved, talked with them about it. And what we found through doing that is we cannot stop somebody from running for the board. If they are eligible to run for the board, then having a spouse, an employer, or an immediate relative who is working in the school district is not something that will stop them legally. They can run. So then we get to the other side of the equation, which is if a person gets elected to the board, let's say the situation of a tenured, certified teacher, it's not even an option for us to then say, okay, well then you can't work here anymore without getting into a ton of problems, probably legal problems, lawsuits at the least. So the practice has been to allow immediate family members to continue working, but not to hire new ones. So what we essentially did after looking at this a number of different ways was to go to writing it up the way that we currently do it, so that we're in compliance with everything legally and so that we're not doing something different than what we have written in a policy. Because if we're not following policies, we're, we're doing it wrong. We gotta change actions or we gotta change the policy. So that's what drove this to be the way that it is. We can still talk about it further than that, but that's the logic behind why we are where we are.
But if that's something, obviously, we're to state policy to allow it because that's what the state indicates, wouldn't it make sense that if we're trying to accommodate that, to put in a recusal scenario that if someone has a relationship with an individual in the district, wouldn't it make sense that they recuse themselves for, for decisions that would be directly affecting that individual financially or otherwise?
Yeah, and actually, that's the nepotism law. So that does actually exist, and if somebody breaks that, they lose their position. So there, there is legal stuff around that already.
But wouldn't it make sense to explicitly state that in the policy even though it's over here and over here? It would make sense, at least to me, that if we explicitly stated in the policy, then we have it covered directly in that policy and the two subsequent policies related to BBFA with GCD and GDC.
Larry or Chris, do either of you know if we don't already have that in a policy?
The way it has worked, as I understand it, is if you are dealing with financial issues of everybody in general and no, no individuals listed, then, then you're fine. If there are things that deal with specific people, if specific people are named, then you have to follow the policy in terms of whether you would recuse yourself. For, for instance, if, if there's something in there that might be, I have a cousin that happens to teach in the district. If there's some financial decision made about him, I would have to excuse myself. I could not vote on him. I think that's still also covered. And that's maybe even beyond the six degrees.
Yeah, and if it were something like voting on a contract item that was everybody, they would not have to accuse themselves. But when it comes down to a specific person, they do.
And if it's personally identifiable, then it has to fall underneath the scope of the policy.
Such as a specific vote on additional compensation for a specific activity rather than part of the group as a general rule?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yes. ACS would probably be a good example.
Okay. And I'll look in that one. But that, just as I was reading it over, that just stuck out to me that we have that sort of issue where it's a matter of timing, as I was reading it. So obviously, since it's in-depth a little differently that I need to go digging into, then that obviously clarifies it. I just think it would make sense to possibly explicitly state it in the policy so it's available right there and then reference back to the other ones in question.
Yeah, that makes sense. And if you weren't privy to the stuff that had been going on before and all of that, then it makes sense that that would be something you'd look at and spot that as, why would we allow this if we're not allowing that?
Right.
I can understand that. Okay. Is there anything you want to do with that or are you good with it the way it is? Or we could just vote to or if anyone else wants to say anything? You don't have to specifically answer that.
I'd like to see if we could possibly hold on to it and then come back and do it at another meeting.
What would you want to look at?
Well, just possibly rework it. So obviously, if there's references back to DCS, like you had said, possibly add those in as reference points. So that way it just makes more coherent explanation to someone coming into it who doesn't understand that there is that dichotomy and there's a reason for it.
Okay.
I would, I would almost suggest that there has to be, there should be a practice. Policies are supposed to be, I believe it covers this. I think the question is a practice or a statement of, this is how we do, no, this.
Like an interpretable explanation of how the policy would be.
Yeah, it's more than, it's more than, there's a kind of policy and a practice or a procedure. I think that what you're describing is a procedural issue. I don't think it's a procedural issue.
Okay.
That's my opinion. That's all.
With that in mind, we can go ahead and, I guess we can proceed as, as chairman.
As what?
We can go ahead and proceed with the policies as listed then, since it's a more procedural interpretation than an actual policy statement.
Okay. Does anyone else have something to bring up to discuss on this one? Somebody like to make a motion to approve these?
Make a motion to approve policies, GCD, GDC, BBFA, and GBCA as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes? Okay.
Jeff, those are good questions. That, I appreciate...
I mean, I know I'm the new guy in the room, but I was just reading it over and to me it seemed like it was literally a matter of timing.
You're no timer already, Jeff. You're not new anymore.
But I think that's important to see what a fresh set of eyes think. I appreciate you doing that.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's important. You're bringing a new set of eyes, so keep asking. And facilities, steering committee report.
All right. So, we've had this facility steering committee that started meeting in January of 2019. We asked at every building, we asked staff and parents to submit potential project ideas in four of the broad areas that we've repeatedly heard in surveys and in some other areas. And that information would go to the facility steering committee. And then the group would visit the building. They'd see that list, they'd get a chance to walk around the building, they'd hear from the building principal. And then we would take them through a series of prioritization activities, both in-person and online, to prioritize projects across the district. Now thankfully, we were able to visit all of the buildings right before COVID hit, and we did the final prioritization right before we Zoom over the course of the spring. If you take a look at all of the stuff that they'd come up with in priority, priority projects, it was over $240 million or about $240 million of work across the district. But we knew that was a little bit high for what we should probably be considering asking for. So, we kept narrowing it down and narrowing it down, and the group came to consensus in early June on about $40 million in projects, the bulk of which are safety and HVAC. Then a small group of us took those numbers, compared that to our five-year plan around Prop R and Prop A and our 410 fund, and kinda pared it back a little bit more. And we had recommended, months ago, a $35 million bond issue again with the bulk of the money going to safety and HVAC projects. And then, from the original facility steering committee list, we had about five and a half million dollars of work that we would cover with Prop R, Prop A, and the 410 fund over a series of years. Now you'll recall that now we have a 45-cent levy that funds the principal and interest payments on the lease that voters approved way back in 2000. Been paying the principal and interest on that ever since. We're getting very close to paying that off. We've also seen data from Marshall how, when you compare us against others in the county, we really are at the tail end of the group when it comes to both facility investments and operational investments. So what we've been talking about for a long, 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 long time is the notion of taking that existing 45 cents after we pay off that lease and shift those existing funds and just reallocate how we use those and do an investment in facilities through a bond issue at roughly 12 cents and the remainder in operations. If you were to go back a year ago, you would have found someone from LJ Hart here, probably Tom Pizarkowicz, talking about what we could do at different pennies of levy. At that time, I would have thought that, you know, maybe that split would have been somewhere in the 20s. But because of COVID, the impact on the state budget, the resulting impact on our budget, we had to shift more over to the operations side to shore up that side, and that's reduced that amount on the bond side. So, as we've talked before, the 33 cents is not a problem. We can move that. The board has the authority to do that. That's not a challenge. Challenge is it takes a vote on the bond part. Challenge is it takes a vote on the bond part. Takes a vote of the people to enter into and issue that $35 million of bond debt. If I asked you to draw a house, maybe you don't draw something like this. These are like small kid drawings, right? But conceptually, that's a house. If you were going to build a house, do you think it'd look like that in the end? Probably not. Probably look a little bit different. There's a difference between the concept of some work and the actual work that gets done in the end. So a few months ago, we showed you potential conceptual drawings at each of the buildings. We've updated those. What I'm going to show you now, walk through at every building, the projects and the updated conceptual drawings. As you look at those, those are just concepts. That isn't, not a demonstration of what the final product is going to look like. It's what we believe could be some potential work, given the project list. So we'll go in alphabetical order, starting with Beasley, where we want to do security entry work. We want to do that at every building to create a catchment or containment area for visitors where they have to funnel through the office and before they enter the remainder of the building. What you would see in any school building that was being built new today, in most school buildings today because of safety. We also want to do some work with restrooms and outdoor lighting and parking. So if you look at Beasley from above, the work that we're considering is going to look something like this with a little bump out at the front to create that security vestibule area, some realignment of parking, and then some additional restrooms down by the library on the right. So if you look at that inside the building, we'd be shifting the office there to right at the front entrance, repurposing the office space, and then we'd have those restrooms down on the end. At Bernard, Bernard's a newer building, a little bit better shape, not as much work there, just working on the security entry and outdoor lighting. We've actually looked at a couple of different plans for the security entrance. This is the simpler of the two. The other one is a lot more complicated. Don't know which one we'll go with yet, but this is certainly the simpler one just to create that little security area right at the front. At Beerbomb, Beerbomb's going to be a lot of work. And part of that is we're going to add some additional classroom space so that we don't have to draw attendance boundaries again in the very near future. And in doing so, what we had to go through was that because we would be adding space that would hold over 50 and updated building codes, we also have to build a storm shelter. So after working with the facility steering committee, we re-envisioned that as building a new library that also serves as that storm shelter area, as well as some other work around Beerbomb. So if we looked at it from the aerial view, conceptually, we have that classroom space and that new library there on the east and south side on the end of the building. You know what? At the end, it may go all the way out to the west. It may go up a little bit to the north. But we also have a reconfiguration of the front end to provide a little bit more parking as well, as well as the security entrance at the front. And you'll see, this is the kind of ground floor or the first level. So what a new library might look like with some office space there. On the ground, on the main level, we've got that reconfiguration of the office space as well as some ADA compliant access to that lower level, those two little classrooms, and then the other classrooms on the top floor. So six classrooms all together. At Blades, Blades is a security entry, but outdoor lighting as well. But Blades is kind of a big change to pull off that security entry. From above, we're going to completely move where you enter Blades from where you do now to down by the cafeteria and gym. Put that piece down there. We've got a little bit more real estate to work with down there. So we would be moving the office again, creating that security area and catch point, and then repurposing the office space as well as expanding it slightly. At Berkeley, Berkeley's got a lot of restroom work as well as a security entry. So we'll be adding some restrooms on the west side of the cafeteria as well as some sidewalk pieces out towards the track. And then a little bit simpler fix in the office to create that vestibule area, and then just restroom work throughout the building. Central office, JB, Whittle, Transportation. It's really a new transportation building over there. Right now, we've got three buildings. You know, we've got two bays in the bus garage. Our office space area does not have restroom in it, so they have to go over to the bus garage to do that. And then we have another building for storage. About 15,000 square feet that would have some bays as well as storage, driver area, and the office space. At Forder, we're going to start doing some HVAC work as well as doing that security entry and some outdoor lighting. So a little bit of jut out there at the front so that we can create that vestibule and catchment area. We'll be moving the office at Forder as well up by the front entrance and then repurposing that existing office space. So you can see that in a number of projects across the district. As we go to Hagaman, same kind of deals, except we're going to do a lot with the site there. And we were going to try to create a second entrance or exit into there so it's not just a one-way in, one-way out at Hagaman, as well as doing that front entrance and being able to go straight into the office and funnel people that way. At John Kerry, again, similar kind of work, although we're going to put a little bit of a awning out front along the sidewalk so we've got a little bit of weather protection as students unload out front there and do that front entrance as well to funnel people through the office. At Melville High, quite a bit, again, security entrance, a lot of work around the band room relative to ADA compliance, some restroom work, new restrooms at the stadium. The baseball and softball field upgrades that we had bid, but the bids came in way high. So we backed away from that as well as HVAC work. So that aerial does include that bus garage work, but it's still there so you can see. Potentially just to the east of it where the stadium restrooms potentially could be. And by redoing the front entrance, well, this is the band area and what we'll have to potentially do down there with ramps and elevators on the main floor in order to move and create that funnel, security containment area. We'll have to take over the teacher work area, which means that we'll have to shift that somewhere else, which at this point probably looks like just some additional space on the end of the building. If we look at Mosaic, we'll be completely realigning how you get in the building as well as doing elevators there. So if you look at kind of the main level here, because there's no place where all three levels align, it'll take two elevators to make this work, one going down from the main floor and one going up from the main floor. But creating an entrance off that upper parking lot into the office to make that entrance more secure. The elevator's going up and down. At Oakville Elementary, we've got, again, the security entry. We've got some ADA pieces. But with the purchase of the new property, we also have some expanded parking. So from an aerial view, here's what parking, the expanded parking could look like. And then we've got a little bit of a change there at the office to create that security vestibule office space area. At Oakville High School, again, the security entry, a little bit of parking work, stadium toilets, a lot of restroom updates throughout the building, some roof work. And again, as with Melville High School, we had already bid the baseball, softball field work, and those bids came in high, and we had delayed that work. So a little simpler entrance based on the way the front end of the building already is, funneling that into the office. And then perhaps the little addition up top for the stadium upgrades, restroom upgrades, and then just restroom upgrades really throughout the building as well as the work outside. Oakville Middle, again, kind of same kind of deal, the security entry. So we'll be changing the front end of the building as well as changing that front entrance to enhance parking out front a little bit of Oakville Middle. But shifting, adding a little bit to the front end, change how folks enter the building so that we can create that secure area in the front. Perhaps repurpose some space there as well. At Point, just a little security entry, and then we've got an emergency exit that needs an ADA accessible ramp. So we'd just be looking at that front end. We'll have to repurpose a little bit of space there to make that work as well. At Rogers, same kind of thing on the front end again, some HVAC work with some changes in that lower parking lot to create some difference, some barrier between the parking, where you park and where the playground is. So you can see there, just, you know, the around, being able to go around for pickup and drop-off still exists, but we've got, expanded the paved area to the east. And we've got a little island in there to create that kind of barrier between the playground and the parking lot area. And that secure area up front to funnel into the office. At Troutline, we've got the security entry, some outdoor lining, and then a big change in the parking in the driveway. Kind of the way we're doing a big change at Oakville Elementary, but we would be wrapping around the back of the building to create a lot more parking around there and relieve that pressure that's on the north side of the building where folks park. It's very narrow in through there. And then do some work at that, at the front entrance to, again, create that same kind of security piece. At Washington, a lot of work at Washington is because of the topography to make this kind of work. So we've got that to do the security entry, the outdoor lighting, and some ADA upgrades for the entrance of the building. So a little bit of a jut out to really majorly move the office at Washington, moving it there to the front entrance, which will mean taking over part of the library and shifting it down to where Fax is right now. And we'd be building in a piece of the courtyard with Fax there to be able to repurpose the existing offices. And then at Lowland, kind of similar deals, ADA upgrades, outdoor lighting and the security entrance. So a little bit of a jut out there, some sidewalk work kind of around. Move that office to the side of the building where people actually enter and then repurpose where the office is now. So all of that, the record ends up being about $35 million in work, which would take 12 cents of the existing 45 cents to be able to fund that. So we've spent the last couple of weeks sharing those conceptual drawings with each of the buildings. Between now and Christmas, we've shared those with PTO. We got January 21 board meeting. That's pretty much the last opportunity the board would have to make a decision to put what we had called before Prop S on the ballot potentially. So with that, I'll try to answer any questions you might have.
Does anyone have questions, comments? That was pretty thorough.
It was very thorough. Thank you. I've always had one question, though. Wouldn't it be easier at Beerbomb just to drill into the one side, the one wall when you're walking in and then on the right and make the entry there, which goes directly into the offices? I guess you guys have a thought about that? Oh, well, yeah, that's true. Could be.
Thank you, Dr. Gans. Okay, next up is open period for patron comments. So we have three people who signed up to talk. First one is Brittany Burkett. And I know you know this, but I will just go through it for everybody. So you have three minutes allotted to speak. And because the board is accountable for protecting legal rights of schools, employees, students, parents, and others, discussions of individuals or specific situations will not be allowed. This is your time to talk to us, and we are actually not really allowed to have a conversation with this. But you can reach us through other ways such as email or that if you want to get more of a back and forth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I thought maybe you were. Thank you for having me again. I thought maybe you were tired of hearing from me, so I brought some other people. A couple of weeks ago, Governor DeSantis stated, and to paraphrase, "In hindsight, knowing what we know now, the closure of public schools was one of the biggest public health mistakes in modern American history. So the harm of school closures is really considerable." That is possibly based on these numbers from the CDC on the survival rate for COVID-19 and the flu, which are virtually indistinguishable. Survival rate of COVID-19 is 99.997%, and of the flu is 99.9%. Since I had this printed, I've since learned that actually, in the 2019, 2020 flu season, with the vaccine, children aged 21 and under, 166 children died in the United States. In the entirety of COVID without a vaccine, 121 children died of COVID in the United States. So for people who are looking for pure numbers and not statistics of percentages, more children died of the flu with the vaccine than of COVID without. And now to hear from our students. Samantha's 19, she's a freshman. Lexi's nine, she's in fourth grade. Austin's seven and second grade. Question was, what do you think of connected learning? Samantha says, it's hard to stay focused. I like the independent work, but this sucks. Lexi says, well, I say it's kind of good, but I don't really learn math. I want to go back soon. Austin says, I just want to break everything. I want to break God. When will this go back to normal? When asked how much they feel they've learned since the schools closed in March, Samantha, I know less than I did last March. I forget things. Lexi, I don't remember anything from last year. And Austin, I know less than last spring. I know nothing. This really makes sense whenever you look at what we already know about what children lose over the summer, three months' time, two and a half to three months' time. Extrapolating this out, by the time our children go back to school, hopefully in January, full till school, they will have lost 2.7 months of learning, 5.3 months of reading. It will require four months to make up. That means that when our children go back, if they go back in January, when they go back to begin their fall semester, '21, '22, they will be at the same learning point they were when we closed schools, a year and a half later. The last one, the. The last one, the optimist quoted Maya Angelou, "I did then what I knew to do. Now that I know better, I do better." School is supposed to be a place where children can explore themselves, learn who they will be apart from their families, learn how to be well-rounded in their best self. But our children are suffering, our families are suffering, and my son wants to break God. We are at a crossroads. Will we be the district that cowers in fear and sets the precedent that we will consider substandard disconnected education equal to in-person engagement, despite the studies showing us what a dangerous idea that is? Or can we have the humility to say what we did, what we could, and now we're going to do what we have to, and we're going to protect our families and our students and their learning and their mental health? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jackie Smolts.
I have been listening to my daughter Brittany talk about her concerns with virtual learning, but I got to experience it firsthand when I had Austin. It was fortunate that I was working from home when she needed me to have Austin for four days while his clothes was, his classroom was closed for a potential COVID exposure. I was listening to Austin and his classes while I worked, so I was not 100% attentive to his online classroom. One of the days when I was assisting him was a day he had self-direct learning, self-directed learning. It was painful watching a seven-year-old, second grader who has ADHD and an IEP attempt self-directed learning. It just doesn't make any sense to me. Austin is not capable of self-directed learning since he has no self-direction. I tried to follow the instructions given us by his teacher, who is also trying to navigate this, this strange system, but I wasn't able to. There were, there were days when Austin had a lot of work to do, there were days when he had nothing to do. There was a day that he had one hour worth of schoolwork to do. There were days, but there were no days in which I felt he learned anything. What would my daughter would have done if I was not able to be home? It's worth noting that not a single person in his classroom had or has developed any symptoms of COVID following this potential exposure. In fact, per policy, he would have had to stay out of daycare, except that you chose, he would not have had to stay out of daycare, I'm sorry, except that you chose to close, close the classroom. With that, the Department of Health said the daycare could not allow him to attend. Two of the children in this family have IEPs and are getting little support. Austin can have his SSD teacher push into his classroom as she is available to assist him. However, in order to gain her attention, he has to email her that he needs her, thus taking his attention away from his work, leaving him further behind. Lexi now has a social skills class with her SSD teacher that is very important. However, in order to do this, she's removed from a significant portion of her class, further decreasing her potential learning when only going two days in person. My eldest grandchild is 14. She's an excellent student. She is holding her own during this strange time. However, she is hurting socially, which I feel is a significant part of the educational experience. She has not seen anyone outside of her family since March, so she has not been able to participate in any social activities. If she were able to attend school, she would at least be able to maintain her friendships, even if on a more limited basis. As it was, she did miss eighth grade social and party, freshman homecoming, and the opportunity to establish freshman sports. I can only say I'm delighted she was not in her senior year. My daughter and her husband are both essential employees and work full-time. Neither the CARES Act nor any benefits that I know of from an employer ever force someone to stay home with their child when the school closes because a well-child came to school. Policies are hurting our families. I struggle with the thought of the potential problems these children will face in the future. They're not currently getting the education they need and deserve during such a crucial time in their education. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Deanna McKelvey.
As you all know, my name is Deanna McKelvey, and I'm the president of Melville High School. And tonight, I don't have a statement to read to the board, but instead I brought a, an email that was sent to me by an elementary school teacher. "Dear Deanna, I'm afraid to speak up, and I'm afraid if I speak up, I will lose my job, but more than that, I'm afraid of getting COVID. Siblings of COVID-positive students are still attending school in my building. Students show up to my classroom with symptoms. Our custodial staff does not have time to sanitize all the spaces, and our building is not even yet to capacity with all our students back. Both classrooms in my building are being quarantined. Staff members are being exposed and testing positive for COVID. Our leaders say that our cohorts are working, but I don't understand how they could call this working. What is going on in my building is not reflected in COVID. As the school year began, we were told it would be safe for our younger students to return because children don't spread the virus. This seemed to be true. In April, children only represented 2.2% of the reported cases nationwide. So, on September 11th, when we were told our pre-K through second grade would begin the blended model on September 22nd, in the two-week span, from September 10th to the September 24th, more than 75,000 new child cases were reported. Our safe 2.2 of all reported cases in April quickly rose to 10.5 by September 24th. So, when the message changed, and we were told that children are less likely to spread the virus. And without even waiting to see if our pre-K through second grade experiment worked, the choice was made to send three through eight into the blended model. This experiment is not working for me and my students, and yet our schools continue to return to in-person instruction. I have done everything I've, everything asked of me, even when I wasn't sure it was safe. I rose to the challenge, as all public educators do on a daily basis. I cried with joy when I saw my students again. I shed even more tears when my colleagues and students in my school were quarantined. It is devastating to have to tell a student that their friends need to stay home when they only just got to school. How do you answer questions like, "Will my friends be okay? What is quarantine? Will my friend die?" It's impossible to teach lessons when students are worried about things they cannot control or understand. I am defeated. I need to be alive to do my job, and my students need to be healthy and feel safe to learn. Thank you, as always, for listening." That was from one of our elementary school teachers, and I get emails like this every day, teachers crying, teachers afraid, students worried. I just wanted to make sure you knew what teachers were thinking right now. Thank you for your time.
Okay, next up is authorization for closed session.
Are you going to be there, Tori?
Yeah, I will. Sorry. I would like to make the motion to enter a closed session meeting for the purpose of discussing the lease, purchase, or sale of real estate.
You got to do a roll call.
Oh, I have to do, do we have to make, do we have to...
So, I'll second, and then you have to do a roll call.
You're second.
Sorry.
You did a second.
I second.
Okay, that's what I was waiting for.
Sorry.
Okay, thank you. Kevin?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yeah.
Jean?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Tori?
Yes.
Okay, we're in closed session.
Oh, she did it. Did you see that, Emily? All right. As long as you saw it.
Eight of us.